March 4th Eugene Water Electric Board Board Meeting. Thank you, everybody for coming out. We'll start off with the agenda check. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to the agenda? They'd like to put fully this time. Seeing none, we'll move on to our second item, which is items from board members and general manager. Let's just start with John Brown and then kind of go around the circle.
Well, thank you. Couple items recently had. Is it mine or is it yours?
I'll try again.
I'm just speaking like normally.
All right, there we go.
Okay, I had an instance where property real close by that somebody had come in and stolen all five heat pumps, kicked in all the doors and they cut all the power to the building, both inside and out, and just absolutely ravaged it like 600,000 bucks for the damage. But called EWEB because power was still hot to the building. How they did this without turning the power off was beyond me. But they were there in 20 minutes and they came out with bucket trucks and turned everything off. And and I really want to thank you, thank you for everybody that responded because it was a dangerous, dangerous situation with all those hot wires hanging around there and all of that. And then generally speaking, just about customer service, I've had several people that have had challenges with the changeover and everything. It had a friend that was overseas for a month and he his credit card couldn't get redone and everything. And so, but the way they we solved the problems was really creative. And I want to thank everybody, customer service all the way, wherever it goes, but good job. Thank you very much.
I'll pass those on. Sonya.
Thanks. I wanted to mention that the El Cog Dinner, that's a fundraiser for Senior Meals on Wheels is this Friday. So see some of you there. We also wanted to get a, I also wanted to get a little bit of an update on some of the other El Cog work, you know, as as we deal with different changes in federal thought. It's been interesting to see the vast majority of the funding that we get for our senior and disabled services regionally flows through El Cog. And those funds are very much up in the air right now, to the point that at one of the events that the executive director was attending, they were told that they might dole out funds based on birth and marriage rates. So anyway, those are some of the things that at El Cog were trying to navigate and stay on top of. And so we just wanted to share that. I know I don't do too much in the way of reporting back, but I think this is a critical piece of information because it affects many, many vulnerable citizens in our community that rely on that those fundings and those services that also are customers of ours. So I wanted to share that. Along those lines, I was contacted by a constituent who had some concerns about the timing of which we apply the late fee. Apparently industry standards that we apply the late fee five days after. And it's not a huge amount. It's $5. And customer service has a lot of leeway in order to weigh if that is my understanding. But for somebody who's on a very limited budget and, you know, maybe had an illness or, you know, for some reason something happened and they're a few days late. I just know that that can be a very, it can be a very scary thing to come because it's such a vital service. So I didn't know if there was any interest in reviewing that at the board, but I I told the constituent that I would raise the issue and see if there were any other head nods for interest in in talking about it further. So I'm in a head nod or two. Okay. So that's something that we can look at. I greatly appreciate that. And then finally, I wanted to, well, two, two last things. I wanted to thank Anna for attending the, I had a meeting that was for bring in a collaboration between a number of city departments, the mayor. Frank mentioned that we that he attended the meeting last month, and I just wanted to thanks to have for being a part of that. And I did a great job. And then finally, big kudos. I had a constituent that was very happy with the work that EWEB did to coordinate with the city on paving the road on Audell. So EWEB, thanks for a job well done. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Kind of hard to follow up after that, Sonya. You had a lot. I just have one thing is I gave a presentation last week to a class at the University of Oregon on sustainability and the public good, and they wanted to hear all about what it was like to be a commissioner and what we did. And we had a very robust discussion. And there are a lot of young people out there now who maybe never thought about running for a utility board that the seed is planted in their minds.
Can you give me the notes from that? So I know what to do as a commissioner? Commissioner Morris.
Think about two weeks ago or so, a few months ago, I think even before I won, or I was elected as commissioner. I'd signed up for the Energy Score Home Program where they come and try to give your home an energy score. And I was found out almost immediately as a commissioner. But it was really great to have both staff and the students come in and really put a lot of expertise into my home and trying to figure out the energy score of a rental unit in a 40 unit apartment. And so just want to pass kudos along that it was, it was incredible. They were very detailed. They were very intentional. So kudos to staff.
Great. As far as myself goes, again, thanks to staff. I had a couple of constituent questions and concerns that I reached out to staff on, and they followed up very quickly and helped resolve the issues, which weren't big issues, but it was just a couple times of communication. So thank you to staff for that. Also, last week, General Manager Lawson had the opportunity to present to the chamber's Local Government Affairs Council, and that was well received. I think that there was a lot of good questions that were asked there. So thank you to Frank for showing up. And I think there were three of us that were there. And I think I got good input and every anytime we have a chance to put Frank in front of a group of people and answer questions, it's been very helpful. So that's that. And then Frank.
Good evening, commissioners. Just so people know, there was no EWEB business discussed between the commissioners at that, at that meeting, so no quorum necessary. Thanks for the feedback. Just a quick clarification. Commissioner Carlson, I think our first formal follow up on the the late fee would be to via correspondence, describe the process today. And then if commissioners at some point want to allocate agenda time to it, that could be a follow up to that, if that's acceptable to you. Thank you.
All right. Any follow up to anything? Right. We will next move on to item number three, which is correspondence.
Commissioners, there was just one item of correspondence this evening, and that had to do with an update from Jason Huzer, who I know is on the line. If you have questions, there are some, there was over 3,000 bills introduced in the state legislature over the last month or two. Not that we are tracking all 3,000. We're trying to keep track of the ones that are most relevant to us. But if commissioners had any updates or questions that they needed from Jason, I'll volunteer him to be able to respond.
Sonya.
I did have a question just about, we have a day at the Capitol next Monday, and I was just curious, you know, if the bills, if this is a good time for for us to go up and support those bills or if they're, you know, to help move them along or help not move them along. Just curious kind of what the general lay of the land is in terms of the bills that we're monitoring and our potential to help.
Jason, you want to respond on the timing?
I think the timing is fantastic, Commissioner Carlson. I'm very excited. You all are making the time. We have a great agenda. We have appointments with all of our Eugene legislators. And this year, we were also able to get appointments with the Chair of the House and Senate Energy Committees. And we also have an appointment with the Director of the Oregon Department of Energy. So really neat schedule. We also, Representative Darren Harbick, who's the new legislator up on the Mackenzie River Valley. He has a doctor's appointment, so he may not be able to have a full meeting with us, but we will probably have a short meet and greet with him as well. And absolutely, I think the timing is perfect. There's a couple of key bills, particularly water rights bills, that are going to get some serious consideration. The bills as constructed pose difficulties for our Willamette Drinking Water Plant. And we definitely need amendments to those bills to accommodate drinking water infrastructure. I think we can get that, but it would be great to have you all with me to reinforce that and help make that a reality.
Great. Thank you, Jason. You there?
Mr. Brown. Jason, I think I've sent an email asking about, I think House Bill 3666, it gives utilities indemnity for wildfires as long as they comply with ODF criteria clearing rides away. What's the status of that?
Yeah, that bill was just introduced probably about eight or nine days ago. So it hasn't received a hearing yet. And I will tell you, it's gotten some media coverage. I think the media coverage is probably a little more black and white when it's actually what the bill does, probably is a little more gray. The key feature of the bill is creating a safety certification standard. The Oregon Public Utility Commission would be in charge of. It would be mandatory for investor owned utilities and voluntary for consumer owned utilities. And as I've heard Representative Marsh, the primary sponsor, describe it, I think what she's trying to, the issue she's trying to solve is that she sees that utilities are going to enormous lengths to mitigate the possibility of igniting wildfires. And no matter how excellent the effort is, the risk will never be zero. And she's trying to find, I think, a credential that could be awarded when a utility has demonstrated a high level of diligence in and with the oversight of the Public Utility Commission. So we've been looking at it as our, many of our utility colleagues. I think we're conceptually supportive, but there's a lot of details we don't fully understand yet. And we're awaiting an amendment that probably very likely will replace certain portions of the bill. So it's a little too soon to tell, but I certainly think we appreciate where Representative Marsh is coming from.
Thank you.
Just a quick clarification for you, Commissioner Brown. It is not ODF. It's Oregon or Oregon PUC that would be the agency that would do the certification. And like Jason said, we're conceptually in agreement with the fact of establishing standards of care for our industry. We also want to make sure we understand any implications for consumer owned utilities for voluntarily joining a certification. What are the on ramps and off ramps? What does it do to your liability? And what does it do to the administration and the overhead associated with it? We want to make sure we're still good stewards of our funds. And so we want it to be efficient and likely more to come as hearings and revisions evolve.
Okay, other questions or comments? Just a heads up, Jason, I had a work conflict come up on Monday, so I won't be able to be there. I'll be there with you in spirit, but I initially responded yes to it, but life happens.
I understand. If there's anything you can do later, I'll let you know. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anybody else on correspondence? Right. Then our next item on the agenda is public input. I'll read a little bit of the preamble here. Welcome to the public input session for this meeting. EWEB is a public nonprofit, not for profit organization whose charter is to deliver drinking water and electricity to our community. Although this forum is not used for an open back and forth dialogue, Commissioner and staff value hearing diverse perspectives and receiving community inputs. Speakers are asked to keep their testimony relevant to EWEB businesses and request that everyone share their comments in a productive and respectful manner. Should speakers or audience member become disruptive, they may be muted or and or removed from the building. When your name is called, you'll have up to three minutes to provide your comments. Public session is now open. We'll begin with, we've got, right now I've got three. Do we have a couple more? Okay, so we have six people signed up tonight. I'll do my best to pronounce the names correctly. If not, please bear with me. So the first one is Misty Bowman, followed by Eric.
Good evening. My name is Misty Bowman. I live in Ward Seven. I'm a Dark Sky Oregon Advocate, and I'm here to discuss light pollution. Eugene is the worst defender of light pollution in Oregon, and that is no exaggeration. I have in my hand Dark Sky Oregon's Sky Quality Meter Report. A sky quality meter is a device used to measure light pollution. We have 53 sky quality meters in Oregon. Two are in Portland, one is in Eugene, and the one in Eugene measures worse light pollution than the one in Portland. On a clear night, we are 20% more light polluted than Southwest and Southeast Portland. On a cloudy night, we are 25% more light polluted. I've emailed EWEB a copy of the complete report and have all of Eugene's data points here. With the passing of Oregon House Bill 2531, making LEDs all but mandatory in Oregon, I fear the lights in Eugene will continue to trend towards the whitest and brightest when Dark Sky International approved LEDs are available. EWEB being primarily responsible for the maintenance and installation of streetlights in Eugene ought to take notes from other Dark Sky International towns in Oregon, such as Antelope and Sisters. These cities and other Dark Sky International cities across the world have noted environmental health and financial benefits to these lighting policies. I am here today in the hope of bringing those health, environmental, and financial benefits, as well as brings the stars back to this, to our night skies for all the citizens of Eugene to enjoy. I urge EWEB to do a full review of our streetlights and change, adjust, or remove lights that do not comply with Dark Sky International's Five Principles of Responsible Outdoor Lighting. Lights in Eugene ought to be, one, necessary. Two, targeted, fully shielded to 80 or 90 degrees nadir. Three, low level, light should only be as bright as needed. Four, controlled, light should be on timers, motions, or dimmer switches. Five, warm colored, orange and yellow lights scatter less than white and blue lights. I urge EWEB to familiarize themselves with the simple five point checklist and see how many lights in Eugene fail this list. There are many that fail point number one, such as the nearly 70 feet tall lights from the abandoned 1967 Roosevelt Freeway project near Skinner Butte Park. To quote Marin Nutson's Sustainable Urban Design Handbook, retrofitting light fixtures may require additional infrastructure, but often reduces long term operating and maintenance costs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Eric is next, followed by Joe Mall.
Good evening. My name is Eric Jura. I live in Ward Six, and I'm a residential customer. Wanted to make some comments about some of the items on your massive agenda with this evening. Concerning the residential customer survey results, good job. Very interesting to see the improvements and change, all the changes that have occurred since the last one. Very interesting reading and very much in depth, and I appreciated that. Also happy to see that you actually use a random sample survey. There are a lot of public organizations that don't. And I don't think those surveys are of much use, but I'm glad you do. With regard to policy SD9, the rate setting policy, very informative. I learned a lot about the, how this is done and what the standards are and so forth. And I very much appreciate the additional detail and transparency. So thank you for doing that. GP8, the meeting and executive sessions. Very pleased to see the addition of the definition and designation of news media organizations that can attend executive sessions and so forth. I think that's something that all organizations that are subject to the public meetings law should have. Little bit concerned that it didn't happen sooner, but better late than never. I think it's very well done, and so I thank you for that. The policy GP17, the board use of electronic communications. And a little bit of the same concern that this didn't happen sooner. But the changes you've made, I think, are very, very appropriate. I've seen it done in other public organizations in a similar fashion. I think it's the kind of thing that it improves the public's confidence and the board's attendance, the public meetings law. So thank you for doing that. One other thing, and this is, it's a little bit of a point of confusion. And I know I'm not supposed to ask questions and you're not required to answer, and that's fine. I'll put it in an email. But since I was reading through it, I was kind of wondering about it. It's interesting that it's, it appears that the board doesn't have legal counsel, that the board uses EWEB's counsel. And I'm, no, that's not the case. You have your own. I see somebody nodding. Okay, then I'll stop there and I won't waste the time. Okay, I'll seek further clarification. And then the last thing I'd like to talk about in my last 15 seconds is I would like to respectively suggest that the board at some time consider the possibility of having written or writing a board training policy. This is a complex organization. There are only five of you. You have immense responsibility. Might be something you want to consider. I think it would be useful. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Joe, followed by Chris Jones.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners. For the record, Joe Mall, I represent Mackenzie River Trust tonight. We work throughout all of the wards and again, appreciate all that you've done over the years to bring people together around the watersheds that now are increasingly a part of EWEB's work. Had an earworm all day long today. You know, remember that song, three is a magic number? Three is a magic, all day long. And it started because the first thing I looked at when I opened up my computer this morning was the notice from the Corps of Engineers on the wetlands mitigation required of the Willamette Drinking Water Plant that hit email boxes today, in case you weren't aware of that. And thumbed through the 23 pages and looked at the small footprint of the wetlands being affected. I'm very familiar with all of the work that goes on to mitigate against that. And just made me think about the scale of that. And very often, I know, not only there, but also the work that you're doing on the planned removal of the Lever Dam. It forces you to focus, and you do that very well. And these are very expensive projects. We have a big federal brouhaha now over just that expense and how those sorts of things get in the way. So there's one thing of the three. The second tonight is at the other end of that spectrum. I'll be here all night and really look forward to the watershed report at the end or toward the end of the night and would be happy to be a part of any conversation if something comes from that. Again, it's hard to over emphasize how important EWEB's investments in watershed stewardship have been over the years. They continue to be monumental. And I'm really glad to see that mention of expansion into the Coast Fork and Middle Fork is something that people are beginning to think about. And then in the middle, now maybe not the middle, but the third thing is the rate payer survey and what wonderful news it is to see that rate payers are so supportive of even additional funding, a surcharge that would go towards continued water stewardship throughout these areas. So I just want to encourage you as commissioners to recognize the breadth of what you have the ability to take care of and steward, because going from those detailed projects to that larger real watershed scale is really what we need. And maybe in that one to $4 range, the magic number is three. But I think that very quickly we should capitalize and take people at their word and add some sort of surcharge that continues to fund watershed stewardship in this larger service area that you're taking on. Thank you again.
Thank you. Chris, and then Kim Donnelly.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Lawson. I'm going to read this so I can stay under my time. My name is Chris Jones. I live at 22nd and Kincaid Street in Eugene in Commissioner Borowski's ward. I was an EWEB employee for six years, during which time I worked with many water and electric field crews on projects and on storm responses. And in my time at EWEB, I saw that what the management and staff say about EWEB and its commitment to safety is really true. EWEB almost always places the safety of its employees and its customers above all of its other priorities, which is great. Unfortunately, my neighbors and I are experiencing a situation in which the safety of our property and our lives is being threatened by EWEB's failure to resolve a problem that we have reported. This is a follow up to an email message sent to EWEB's Vegetation Management Supervisor on February 11th of last year, over a year ago, by EWEB customer Kim Donahay, who will speak to you next. Kim is one of my neighbors. On the evening of January 16th, 2024, during the ice storm that I'm sure you all remember, ice covered branches sagged and came into repeated contact with 12,000 volt electric lines above Kim's house on East 22nd Avenue. I sent a video of the event to EWEB's Vegetation Management Supervisor and this afternoon to Commissioner Borowski, who can share it with the rest of you. The video shows the trees' branches burning as they came in contact with the wires. The fire burned continuously for over 50, that's five zero minutes, dropping pieces of burning debris onto the roof of my neighbor's house. This hazardous situation and the subsequent power outage experienced on a below freezing night by over 1,400 residences was caused by substandard levels of tree trimming due to an unusual contract EWEB has with Kim's neighboring homeowner, John Schuster, who lives at 959 East 22nd Avenue. A group of homeowners in the neighborhood have been attempting for over a year to work with EWEB to make this situation safe. But we have continually received responses that this situation is in the hands of EWEB's lawyers. Nothing has happened. And the tree branches are in contact with electrical wires over Kim's house as I speak with you tonight. It's past time to make this situation safe for Ms. Donahy and the 1,400 other residences. If the legal situation cannot be resolved, it's time to implement a technical solution, whether that's rerouting the power lines, placing them underground, or whatever safe situation EWEB deems suitable. Thank you for your time.
Kim, followed by Alfredo.
Hey, thank you so much. My name is Kim Donahy, and I live in Ward Three. And I'm also going to read this. I'm deeply concerned about the fire risk from overgrown trees near power lines in my neighborhood. A neighbor in the alley signed a contract with EWEB in 1991, preventing tree trimming. But conditions have changed dramatically since then. Wildfires weren't a major concern back then, but now with increasing heat, drought, and high winds, the risk is too great to ignore. We've seen the devastation power line fires can cause. The 2018 campfire sparked by a PG&E power line destroyed Paradise, California, killing 85 people. In August 2023, drought and high winds endowed power lines devastated Lahaina, Hawaii, and killed over 100 people and displaced over 5,000. Then this January, Pacific Palisades and Altadena saw devastating fires. Power lines, wind, and drought fueled this desolation. There have been two fires in my alley in the past two winters caused by tree branches hitting the power lines. Fortunately, both were extinguished by rain and snow. A firefighter on the scene warned us that by July, Eugene could face a disaster like California or Hawaii. I understand EWEB is in litigation over this contract, but this legal battle has gone on for a year while the fire risk continues to grow. If a fire starts under summer conditions, it could be catastrophic. I urge EWEB to take emergency action or find a way to expedite this process before it's too late. Waiting until after disaster strikes doesn't seem to be a good option. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Alfredo.
All this time, I can't say my last name properly. Anyway, I'm Alfredo Gormazano. I think I live in Ward One. I'm here to talk about something interesting that happened today. You know, you know me because of my opposition to smart meters for a long time. Was on the street talking to a neighbor and one of our neighbor, other neighbors pulled up in his car, 10 minutes to two, and said, "You guys have a smart meter on your house?" Like, "Yeah," he said, "Mine's set in non-broadcasting mode." He says, "I can't even go in my backyard anymore. I just can't stand being..." It's just sending out so much. I said, "You know, in the first 24 to 48 hours after they put mine in and it was broadcasting, I felt the same way in my yard. I couldn't stand being anywhere near that meter." When the broadcasting was shut off, it shifted. It was okay to be around it. I don't know if these particular smart meters have lithium batteries in them, but in some of these fires that have happened in places, those batteries in smart meters may have been exploding and really making fires worse at houses. I will gladly trade in my smart meter, which you could probably sell on the black market somewhere, for a nice glass and metal analog meter like I used to have on my house. There are a lot of people in Eugene that feel the same way. Somebody forgot to set the timer, so I don't know how much time I have left, but sure, I'll take three more minutes. And also hearing other stories today about, well, about the light pollution. You know, I'm a night person and I drove here today and there was so much light pollution in the sky that I had a squint. Just kidding. But no, living in Hawaii and Mahalo for pronouncing Hawaii properly over there, where the lights there are orange lights, yellow lights, in order to keep the light pollution level down for the telescopes on Mauna Kea. It's amazing how many stars you see in the sky there. It is so powerful and beautiful. I wish we could see those kinds of stars here in Eugene. And I've gone out to even darker places outside of town, but there's still so much light coming off of town that you don't see the stars like you normally can. And another thing I'd like to address is this push towards LED, 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 everything. I cannot stand LED lights in my house or anywhere else that I am. They do not affect me very well. I go online and buy full-spectrum incandescent lights, which the last ones I bought like these lasted me about 10 years. And we're worried about them using too much electricity, but we're pushing towards more electric cars, artificial intelligence, cryptocurrency, all these things which really, really, really eat up tons of electricity. And you're worried. We're worried about incandescent lights in houses. Again, we should have free choice on that. You know, some people want to have that. It might lower your electric bill. Cool. Anyway, I'm not sure what amount of time I'm at, but thank you very much. And I won't be able to stay for the rest of the meeting, which I know I will find interesting because I'm driving a friend off to the hospital this evening. And yes, I fixed my car. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, I will close public comment and ask if any commissioners or staff would like to respond or have questions.
I just had a couple of quick comments. I, my family has telescopes and we go out and can't see anything in Eugene. So I feel for you very much in terms that we can't see much. We also have the unfortunate situation that eight months out of the year, it's very cloudy. But I appreciate the thought and would very much like to see the dark sky pollution report. So please do send that over to me. Wanted to say thank you to the other folks for coming out and giving their thoughts and opinions. And also we'll talk with General Manager Lawson again to get more of an understanding on the litigation situation there. It's certainly concerning and I know that we're working to get what we can done. But anyway, thank you for sharing that and coming out because, as you mentioned, we do value safety very much. And so let's figure that out. Thanks.
Great. Other commissioners? John?
Do like to thank everybody this evening. Eric and Joe, thank you. Voices, it's so nice to have somebody come to the podium and say, "You're doing a good job, but we really like what you've done," and things such as that. So I really appreciate that and I appreciate the topics, the range of the topics you talked about. And Chris and Kim, I know that if there's litigation involved, we can't get into it, but I guarantee our general manager, Herb Lab, clear, and they will take whatever action they do need to respond to you and whatever, because if anybody understands the importance of safety, we do. Well, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Ed. Come on.
Yeah, I just wanted to say on a couple of things that just for some follow-up. For the testimony on light pollution, one of the things that we can do for commissioners is to clarify the roles between E-Web and the city. We do some maintenance on private lighting. Believe the city is actually the one who specifies and does the maintenance on sort of streetlights. We'll get that clarified just so that commissioners understand the different roles there. And then, and certainly for Chris Jones and Kim, totally understand the sense of urgency and we agree with that. I think we're trying to expedite the process here to as fast as we can as well. We totally recognize that there's a sense of urgency there and we want to get this resolved also. It's been since 1991 and we'd like to get it done.
Great. Anybody else? I guess what I would say is to Eric, thank you for reading the packet. You read it as thoroughly or more thoroughly than most of us board members do. Kudos to you for that. And it's just nice that you feel that we are doing things in a correct manner and that there are people out there that are checking on us. That's, that's, that's good for us. We check on the organization. We're the check on the organization, but you guys are the check on us. And so we appreciate those, those, anytime somebody does that and checks on us. Thank you for coming. And with that, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the approval of Consent Calendar A. Commissioner Slossberg.
To approve Consent Calendar A?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Post? Anous? Okay, next is item number six, approval of Consent Calendar B.
Go for Consent Calendar B.
Second.
By Commissioner Slossberg, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, and unanimous. Thank you, folks. All right. Item seven, we didn't remove anything from the consent calendar. So we'll move on to item eight, which is the residential consumer survey results. And we'll turn it over to General Manager Lawson.
President Barofsky, Commissioners, good evening. For the audio record, Frank Lawson, E-Web General Manager. And joining me this evening to kick things off is Jen Connors, our Communications Manager. Jen?
Yeah, okay. Good evening, Commissioners and E-Web staff members of the public. I am going to just cover a few items related to the survey methodology and then kick it back to Frank to talk about the survey results and next steps. So the last time E-Web conducted a customer survey was in 2022. And those survey results were discussed in a public session, much like this one, and are published on our website. Like the 2022 survey, 2024 was also administered by an independent research firm, Great Blue Research, Inc., to ensure a professional unbiased approach to the survey design and data collection. The questions covered a range of topics, including our core services, our rate structures, and communication. It was a random sample. The survey was delivered via email to 34,000 customers by Great Blue and then also made available to our customers via our Current Connections newsletter, which goes to 70,000 residential customers every month. It's also published on our website and our social media platforms. The survey was open for over five weeks, allowing ample time for participation, and the response rate was strong. So you can see from the slide, almost 1,300 customers answered the survey. And that provided us with a very reliable survey with 2.7% margin of error and a 95% confidence level. For those of us like myself who are not survey experts, what that means is that if the survey was conducted 100 times, 95 of those times would come back with the same results within that margin of error. With that, I will turn it over to Frank to talk about the results.
Thanks, Jen. So Commissioners, in your packet, you received some background information with a few of the key takeaways. We'll just touch on a few this evening. Won't go through all of them. We'd like to leave some time for questions at the end. One of the takeaways was if you compare 2022 to 2024, really across the board, we saw improved responses, favorable responses in almost every category, with the exception of two. One, investments in infrastructure resiliency, that was not a question that we asked in 2022. And the other one, which is within the margin of error, was efforts to control prices and costs. And so all of the other areas, reliability, communication, satisfactions, trust, we had specific questions on trust, all of those showed favorable trends, in some cases, significant favorable trends relative to 2022. We also, because we use an outside research firm, we can do some national benchmarking. And the benchmarking shows that E-Web received higher ratings in a number of categories, including electric service rating and also relative to our communications approaches and public awareness. Some of the other things that we recognized, just, and this was a methodology where you actually ask customers to prioritize it. It isn't a, "Do you want this?" It is ranked survey questions. And consistent with past surveys, even going back further than 2022, really reliability and affordability rank the highest amongst our customers. And that really continued. The graph on the right shows customer priorities in our, in really controlling costs relative to other things, including some of the different programs that we offer. But not a surprise that affordability and reliability ranked the highest in the categories of ranking. And that was both with our core functions and also with priorities around what's our role in the, in the community. We did get some open-ended responses. 32% of those mentioned affordability as an area that they thought E-Web could improve in. The other thing to note is just the awareness that customers have in our, in our different programs and services relative to national benchmarks is significantly higher. I think we've all recognized the work that our communications team has done in the past couple of years. Awareness around projects, emergency preparedness and other things, emergency water stations. And that effort really is bearing fruit when you look at how customers are aware of our emergency preparedness efforts kind of across the board. Even projects that haven't started yet, like the Willamette Water Treatment Plant, the public's significantly more aware than what our firm says they see in other territories. Also, significant improvement in awareness, for example, emergency water stations, where really two-thirds of our customers now recognize, at least they know about it. They may not know specifically where it is, but significant awareness in that, in that initiative. There were some other kind of key takeaways that had to do with areas for improvement. For example, they did, we had incredibly high ratings in reliability, but also recognize that the prevention of outages, our response to outages and our communications around outages is an area that we still think we need to improve in and customers would agree with us on that. There's a significant interest in future rate design. A lot of customer interest in programs like demand response and a little less in time of use rates, but an interest in various programs and services and how those are going to affect the rates, how those are going to influence things like energy efficiency and conservation for electric and water. And then customers really value our environmental and climate actions, but also expect reliability and affordability to really remain our primary focus as an organization. We, as far as next steps, we do plan to socialize the results further, publishing those on our website, also providing commissioners with the full report. We started with a high-level overview and then want to dig down further. There are some areas where demographics may matter. And so, for example, it was no surprise when we started digging into it that those income had a big influence on responses to our efforts to control costs, for example, and our pricing interested in how we're working on cost controls and pricing. Though we also noticed there was significant differences in age. So demographics did matter and we'll take a deeper dive and use this information to really help ourselves improve. So more to come on socializing that, also inside the organization, making sure our own employees know about the survey, know what we're learning from the survey and putting customers in that loop, I think is incredibly important internally. The, I'll just kind of conclude by saying, one of the questions that always comes up relative to a digital survey is what does, you know, an email survey, how does that tend to differ from a phone survey or other types of surveys? And the feedback we got from the research agency is that from a residential customer base, the phone surveys and the digital surveys produce similar results. And also relative to small commercial, it tends to be very similar to the residential surveys. Where it does start to deviate is with large commercial and industrial and key accounts where they have particular interests. And so that's an area where we'll probably continue our outreach to those accounts really on a probably more of an individual and qualitative basis as opposed to a quantitative basis. But I wanted to provide that just for some context. And with that, Commissioners, we'd be happy to answer some questions, get your feedback. Really, this is an effort on our part to learn as much as we can and use that information in decisions that we're going to work with you on and how we prioritize our work and our resources internally, how we develop our goals. We think it's important feedback happens to be favorable in most of the areas, but also provide some opportunities to improve and we'll dive into those and, and look at how we address them.
Thank you. Commissioner Crumson.
Well, wonderful results. Thanks for sharing that. I want to say the first thing that I thought of when I was reading it and the results is that we've been doing a lot of this great work all throughout. I think the difference is that we have an absolute stellar, top-notch communications team. So thank you for all of your work because I would get contacted in the public. More people, "E-Web isn't doing this. E-Web isn't doing that." And I barely get that anymore. I think people really see a lot of efforts that we're doing because you're telling a wonderful story about it. And it's not that we weren't doing it before. It's that we're doing a better job telling people that we're doing it. So thank you for the effort to... So thank you for the effort to inform our customers about that work. Great job.
Okay. Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. Great results. I love it. Just a quick question, historical perspective. I know that you've talked about affordability and reliability, and that's the biggies. And so on the those two, we used to have the metrics on SADI and SAFI trying to stay up by ninety five percentile, and I think we're still staying there. But the affordability part, we used to kind of have a forward direct policy or or goal of keeping rate increases tied to inflation, and we're not there anymore, even close. Could we go back to that? Because there's this pressure, because, I mean, you know, I'm doing the math. And every year when we say a percentage, that's if we put this in a dollar amount, it's totally different. Because when you take a dollar and you compound it, that we've been doing over the last decade. And now we're way above inflation, and I don't know if that's on us for not raising rates consistently or just what we needed.
When you say on us, you mean the commissioners? Oh, sorry, I was just kidding. I I do think that in some ways, customers have a hierarchy of needs. If if we were dealing with issues such as lead in our water, I think that the issue of affordability would probably you, what you'd probably hear is that, hey, we want to get the water fixed, even if it costs costs a little bit more. We generally have good reliability from a, the the reliability metrics that you mentioned, SADI and SAFI duration and frequency of outages on the electric side. And then our water quality is excellent on the on the water side, our breaks per hundred miles, which you'll hear about later. Some of those statistics are are good. I I do think that this is a reminder that costs and prices matter. Now, we we also have some challenges with replacing infrastructure on the electric side, the aging of infrastructure. I would also point out, Commissioner Brown, that if you look at the long term financial plan, even though we've had some near term price increases that are are larger than our inflationary sort of general inflation of typically three or four percent, the average over the 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 long term financial plan still is is not far from that. We do have some some near term pressures for a number of reasons. But we also recognize and we we are hearing it that affordability does matter. And that's something I think we're going to dive into a little bit deeper relative to how we can prioritize our work and projects and and other things. So it is in, it is important. I think this is a reminder of that. And something we should continue to learn from and work on.
Um, there's just a couple of things that jumped out at me that I thought were just a little bit surprising. One was that our customer satisfaction went up, especially during a time when people's trust in public institutions seemed to have gone down. So I think it's really great that that we've had an increase in that. And then just something that I found curious was that cost was obviously one of the major concerns for people. And at the same time, there was a support for continuing the watershed fee for that. Those two things were very interesting because it's an extra cost. And I don't have a commentary on it. It was just something that I noted. And then the last thing was that curious, it's, I'm curious about if if the survey were to be done now compared to when it was done at the end of last year. I know that in this past month, we've heard from a lot of customers who've noticed a big jump in their bill in February for a variety of reasons. I'm just curious how people would respond that, because I think that you tend to respond based on your most recent experience. So just just some things that I was thinking about.
Thanks, Commissioner Schlossberg. The, I think it's an important reminder that a survey is a snapshot in time. And it is important to look at surveys over the course of a number of years. Some of the responses, for example, in this survey relating to outage management could have been that we had a major ice storm last winter, and your last experience with EWEB may have been either through that or we may have been in the middle of a system changeover when some of the survey was conducted. This being an incredibly cold winter relative to last winter, I personally have seen it, my last bill was seventy one percent higher than my same equivalent bill, same number of days last year at the same time. And so there's a certainly an awareness that that the bill now would look different than than it would last year at this time. So the the timing of the surveys matter. I think you have to look at these as trends and snapshots in in time and not look, look, look at it as opportunities and what does it tell you? But I don't think you can overread a particular survey as being, oh, this is great, we can stop working. I I think what you look for is opportunities to adjust and things that start to to look like larger trends. It does put pressure and what what, I think there is tension between some of the things that people want their utility to do and the price of which it has on their bill. And we even even saw the lowest ranking of things relative to our our role in the public as the education programs, which is something that the commissioners have been very supportive through the years. There is a natural tension there that exists, and we we have to do the same thing with infrastructure. We have to do the same thing with energy efficiency programs with what's the trade out between having programs and having the the lowest price possible. And there's those are constant navigation there that takes place.
Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the the great work in the survey. I really appreciate it. And it outlined, I think, some clear information for us to continue moving forward. I also just want to mention, I'm glad to be joining this board when customer trust is at an all time high. So, hey, that works out great. I I wanted to just make a few comments and and observations. And that, following the ice storm in particular, and customer trust in EWEB is at an all time high. And I think that's reflective of what I was hearing on the ground, and I think what we all heard as well from from many EWEB customers of of EWEB's response to that, to the ice storm and how quickly and how dedicated we were. So I just want to comment on that, that I I'm glad to see that that is reflected in this survey as well. One thing that really surprised me on the third slide related to affordable affordability was how much knowledge there was of the EWEB Bill Assistance Program. At seventy, the text is really tiny, but seventy somewhat percent. And with that knowledge and knowing that that customer care seems to be exhausted every month, I think that that's just something to connect the dots on and and really see that our community is aware of this, our Bill Assistance Program, but then our community is also utilizing and exhausting one hundred percent of it or as much as possible. So I just wanted to observe that. And otherwise, great job. Thank you.
Thank you. I put myself in the queue. Yeah, great, great survey, great numbers. It is a snapshot in time. I don't know what was going on in twenty twenty two that that they have depressed some of the numbers. We'd have to look back on it and and do it. But I'm very encouraged by the numbers going forward. I am going to channel former Commissioner Matt McCray and and Joe, and Joe Mall and and just throw out there that there was a twenty five point increase in efforts to protect the local watershed, the drinking water source. To me, that's that's huge. That's something that I think is one, a core mission that we we want to do is make sure that we have good water coming into the treatment plant and hopefully into our new treatment plant. And the possibility of of looking into maintaining the the fee that we put on after holiday farm fires. I will be champion championing that going forward. I hope that there'll be other people on the board that'll do that. But I think with this, these types of numbers and the tangible good work that we've seen come out of that of the McKenzie, I think is a testament to show that we are doing good work and we're showing our work. And that's, that's something that I'm looking forward to encouraging. Thank you for that. Other questions or comments? Yes, right?
Yeah, President Baravsky, the the one thing that I would would want to stress are just just a couple of points. First of all, the communications team, I would agree with Commissioner comments, have done a phenomenal job of communicating, attempting to be transparent, developing relationships in the cases of of large impactful projects with with neighbors, for example, who are affected by the work that we do, and some of it's very impactful to different neighborhoods. I would also probably be remiss if I didn't, on behalf of the communications team, reflect that a lot of that comes from the fact that good work is taking place, well planned work. It's not just, it's, it makes it easier when you have something good to communicate than if you have something challenging or bad to communicate. So communications team has done a great job, but it's also staff has done a great job in the, in particular with the projects and the issues that we know are in the out in the forefront of of our community. I also want to emphasize that I don't believe that we personally look at this and say, oh, we're, we're going to celebrate this too much. This, this is something that customers will evaluate us based on their last experience with us. And so we're only as good as the next interaction we have with people. And so I really want to emphasize there's more information to dive into. We are looking at things like our limited income program this year. How can we make that more effective? It's also a reminder of the the importance of the the affordability of of the organization and reminds us that we need to focus on some real core things. And so it's good news. It's better than the other way. At the same time, we really can't rest on our laurels here. We need to keep working and keep attempting to do better. Continuous improvement really needs to have to, has to be part of our culture.
Okay. Other comments or questions? All right. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to the annual board policy review. That's Frank. Paid by the hour?
What's that?
Are you paid by the hour?
I don't think so.
You're getting a little
I hear there are overtime rule changes coming, but I don't, but it's not paying attention to that. Are we ready?
Yep.
Commissioners, again, this is Frank Lawson. Ann Cause joining me here for this particular part of the evening. This is to review board policies, potential revisions. As Ann reminded me yesterday, we have you, you, sorry, I just say we, you have fifty one board policies could be, did that include the new one? Was fifty, now it's fifty one. There's a number of these. And it was really established as standard practice that the board would take a look at these on an annual basis and look for opportunities. Again, another example of continuous improvement. In the packet, there were a number of different potential opportunities. I won't go through these individually. I think you all have the markup, you all have the the policies themselves. And really, this this evening is for your discussion around what some of those modifications might be. There's potentially a couple of new policies. One was GP eighteen, just a little bit of clarification around that. That's not only for commissioners, it's also for staff to understand when we bring you certain plans, for example, what is, what are we asking commissioners to approve? What are we asking you to, for example, acknowledge or endorse? This was for clarification around governance, specific to certain outcomes of documents or planning. And so that we felt was both a benefit to staff and commissioners. And then the other one that's in development, probably be presented in an upcoming meeting, will be a policy around the water system development charges or SDCs. That's important to capture in policy because we don't do it very often. And policies tend to live on so that a board ten years from now can understand the the goal and the intent of of SDCs and what the direction was with that. I did hear a suggestion earlier this evening around board, new board member training. As you you know for sure recently, and all of you, except for maybe Commissioner Brown, who's been on the board for a number of years, we have a pretty well scripted process already for commissioners. Whether you would want to make that policy would be something that could be, could be discussed this evening, could be debated amongst the board. So the the goal tonight is for you to discuss the changes. If they're fairly straightforward, as far as suggestions or revisions, those potentially could come back for action as early as next probably May, I would I would say. Probably incorporate those, give you a a clean version in April for likely approvals in May.
Okay. Discussion, Commissioner Carlson.
Couple of points on there. On GP five, that is the role of Board President. It mentions that the Board President or their designee is responsible for orientation of new commissioners for board policy, and then JP fifteen, and then in JP fifteen, it says the Office of the General Manager is responsible for coordinating the orientation of new commissioners. The General Manager or their delegate shall conduct the Board President to determine, consult the Board President to determine their desired level of participation in the orientation process and obtain general guidance around the priorities, the orientation. Just in my experience, I I think it's nice for the Board President to be involved, but it's by and large the General Manager's office. I mean, like you said, you have, you know, a full list of trainings and, you know, staff meetings and all of the information that's gathered and even, you know, ongoing training for the board like we have this evening around internal information systems. So I don't know if it it is necessary, but it just, it kind of seemed a little bit of a conflict because one said that the Board President or their designee is responsible, and then the other one said that it's the General Manager's office. So if there's an interest there and just clarifying that that's the General Manager's office, that might be helpful to help folks understand that, but I'll look at others. And then the only other thing that I noted is that JP sixteen says that EWEB Board Members will be allowed annual annual budget for travel and expenses related to utility business. And any amount in excess of the total amount allotted for all board members shall be reviewed and considered by the board. And I, I mean, we we travel so little that I think it probably hasn't mattered. But I don't even know what that number is and have never known. So I just thought I would put that out there.
Sorry, I don't have all those numbers memorized.
It's okay. Just at some point.
You you're over budget, Commissioner. Just, I'm just kidding.
Any other comments or questions?
I'd just like to say thank you for all that work, because that's just one step above reading the audit. But seriously, fifty seven policies and a two hundred and forty page packet this evening. I I'm going with what Eric suggested as public testimony about having a board, new board member policy on on doing that and kind of cleaning it up again, because what we saw this evening, what Commissioner Morris got to see and all that, that that's valuable. And you just don't have to learn by trial and error, because this is a pretty complex topic, and it's just so many different arms and and things. I I would like to see myself, if we could move that way and make that a policy.
Fifty two is not enough. Any other discussion? Again, I would just like to say thanks to Ann and staff who put this all together. I know going through and I know going through and reading those and figuring out where you need to redline and, and change things. Even if it's just changing an "and" to a "but", those types of things are tedious, at least. And you did an excellent job of editing. I think that that's a, a skill that a lot of us don't, don't have. And I really appreciate all the hard work that you've done to help bring this packet to us for review. It was, it was very clear and concise. You know, when the red line, when I saw red line, I looked at it and said, yeah, that does make sense to take that word out or, or this and that out. So, I really appreciate all the hard work that's done. Oh, yeah.
I just did want to note that we do have, I mean, GP 15 is the new commissioner orientation policy. So, there is a policy there. And I agree that, you know, maybe cleaning that little piece up. But otherwise, there is a policy around doing new commissioner orientations. So, if we want to add more information on what that entails, although I, I wouldn't want to be so comprehensive that it, we miss key things. I think the list that you generally have is pretty good overall and, anyway.
Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I wanted to mention GP 15 pretty much outlines my experience being onboarded here. So, I, I mean, a quick copy paste, I think, makes sense to me. But highlighting some, some minor key things, but otherwise, yeah, this, I was reading it and it, it really followed along the, the same track that I've, I've done as a new commissioner. And I, I just wanted to also share my, my kudos as well. I've professionally written bylaws before and it's a very tedious task. And this is excellent work and, and very appreciated. So, it was, you, with every red line, there's, there's thoughtfulness behind it. So, I just want to say thank you for that.
Okay.
Need any clarifications?
I think so. If, it sounds like you're pretty much in support of the red lines as proposed. So, I'll get you a clean copy next month and we can.
Probably put it through a consent calendar even at, at that point, if, if there's no objection.
I just, one clarification, Commissioner Carlson brought up the, the the conflict in words between policies. What I, what I heard was that you wanted to delegate that to the General Manager's office. In general, the responsibility for new commissioner orientation. However, the Board President and in fact, other members of, of the board could play a role. But the primary responsibility was with the General Manager's office. And I just wanted to make sure I'm hearing that correctly.
Yeah. The, the way that I heard it would be that I would be more comfortable or would be comfortable with is that it's, it's the General Manager's duty in consultation with the, with the Board President, you know? So, then you just say, hey, we're going to be onboarding if this is the process. Does that seem okay with you as a Board President? That, that still gives the, the board a little bit of oversight of what we see as what we would like to have onboarded. You know, that what worked best for us. And that may be, may differ from what your perspective is. So, have, I think having a little bit of perspective from the board is, is valuable. And however you would like to implement that into the policy, it was a direction that I would feel comfortable with. Mr. Morris.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to highlight, so in, I would, I mean, I'm in support of, of changing the language in GP 5 to change the, the lead of, of who is responsible for the, the commissioner orientation to the General Manager's office. I wanted to highlight in, in 15, I think, three bullet points down is design a series of orientations for new commissioners, which includes but not limited to Board President and Board Members. And so, I think it, it sounds like that's addressed as well. I, I do hear of, of maybe being a little bit more intentional with Board President exclusively. But I also want to share too, in, in my experience, the last Board President disappeared into the night. So, thank you, Commissioner McCray. But, so there are certain scenarios in which that might not make the most sense in, in that transition. But, you know, I wanted to just highlight it as mentioned, Board President.
Oh, yeah.
My, my only point in raising it is that it says the Board President, and then it says or their designee is responsible. And it just seems like it's really more the General Manager in consultation with the, you know, the President or with the other board members. So, I just think flipping that around helps clarify it so that if a new person coming in like, oh, what is the role of the Board President? I'm entirely responsible for the orientation of new commissioners. That's really not the case. So, I think it just, if there's a quick word switch, it would clarify it. And I don't want to get too, too into the weeds that we already have, but.
Good.
I think we have enough to work with commissioners. Thank you. I would also just, just a note for someone who might be listening in. We normally do this in December of every year. This year, it got put off a couple of months. The reason that we do it in December is if we do have any commissioner changeover, that we're able to leverage the experience of, of any commissioners who may be leaving at the end of the year. So, this is normally a December process. We'll try to get back to December this year, including reviewing any, specifically any new policies that, that may, we may have. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seven, a little bit ahead of schedule. Do you want to go into the bylaws next? Attack.
Thank you, President Barofsky. I think I'm just going to sit here all evening. And this, this one actually should be fairly straightforward. The bylaws, as written in the bylaws, need to be reviewed within three months after there is a new commissioner, which we have. There were two recommended updates and, and really just sort of modernization. One relative to addressing virtual attendance and the other is simply an ORS reference in one of the sections. The, the process for the bylaws is a little bit different than board policy in that if we are going to make a change and the board is looking at taking action, we do have to provide a 14-day, basically two-week public notice of what those amendments are. And if the board is agreeable to the, the two changes this evening, then we could potentially serve that public notice and bring that issue back for board approval in April.
Okay. Comments or discussion?
Can you clarify Article 5, Section 1, the last? There's a General Manager Secretary that you shall designate an Assistant Secretary, not Assistant General Manager Secretary, but Assistant Secretary. So, that's a different job description.
Yes. And, and basically, the Assistant Secretary presently is Ann Cause.
Okay. And then a Treasurer.
Right.
Who's that? Okay, so you're Treasurer and Assistant Treasurer.
That's Tim Marie Harwood.
All right, I just had never heard those terms and, you know, but don't read this every day. So, thank you for that clarification.
Sonya.
I, I didn't get to mention, but I, I did appreciate the, the work that was done on the media policy. I'm sorry that I missed that. I thought that was in the bylaw section. Both of them were. So, anyway, I just wanted to note that. Otherwise, thank you for, again, for all of the work. I think that the, the work that you've done on, on all of these sections to bring it back up and make the adjustments looked really good. So, you know, I personally would be supportive of bringing it back in April.
They're discussing? Do you need a vote on us to move it to the public?
I don't believe so, President. I, I think if, if anybody is in disagreement to these revisions, we're not taking action tonight. But if anybody is not in agreement to these revisions, I think now would be the time to, to speak about it to. Otherwise, we can proceed to potential action in public setting at next month's meeting.
Okay. So, you know, send, we will go with that. Thank you.
Thank you, President Barofsky.
Okay. Item 11 is a break. We're ahead of schedule, but I'm going to take the break anyways. So, we'll come back at seven o'clock. By that clock, whatever that one up in there is. If that's different from your phone, that's the one I'm using.
Way over the salary.
Seven o'clock. Introducing EUF Board, our item number. Item number 12 is prior year. And results of the operation and strategic goals report.
President Barofsky, commissioners, good evening again. Again, for the record, Frank Lawson, the CEO and general manager. I wanted to start off this evening with just a couple of comments. The the goal this evening of the presentation is to provide some context. Relative to the 82 page report. That you got on the results from last year. Overall compliments to the board and to staff for. Really having an incredible year and getting an incredible amount of work done. In saying that, though, there's some years that just feel harder than others. And 2024 certainly had its challenges. But really wanted to start off by just complimenting our staff, our partners. We have a lot of partners locally. And the and the board for all of their work this past year. It did start off. Rather in a challenging fashion this last year in the first quarter on the elect. So I'll start with water, the the finances. For water, this looking at affordability, really solid this year. Some of that driven by some higher consumption around 433,000 kilogallons over. Relatively conservative budget. But the the water finances performed in a solid fashion. The electric side in the very first quarter. Had an $18 million hole. Some of that was driven by storm response. Some of it was driven by in that storm lost connection to our own generation that we would typically be marketing. We also had. Other than the few days of ice, we had a very mild winter. So consumption was down. And overall, water availability for generation was roughly 80%, 82% of what was normally available. And so the the financial pressures on the electric side were were significant. We did finish the year. With a positive contribution to net margin or or change in net position. And so want to compliment staff in particular for the last six months. Working on looking for opportunities to improve our financial position on the electric side. The results also from investments and looking at our financial metrics. We did have a revenue requirement increase of 8% on the water side, 7% on the electric side. Some of that driven by some pretty significant investments. That we're looking to make going forward and creating the the financial headroom to be able to do that. And so continue to see some pressure. Particularly on on the electric side, but also just through investment on the water side. The electric side from a really overall performance. The SADI and safety, which is really the system average duration of outage and frequency of outage. Relatively close to our five year average, which is tends to be. Very good numbers if you look across the country. We perform very well. You have to dive into that a little bit deeper because we're an urban utility and there's differences between urban and rural areas. And so wanted to at least mention that it it always isn't in one number. We also look at response times and and other things. We did have some generation work going on. Some of that was Carmen Smith relicensing. We did make headway on some of the the dam safety issues at at Trail Bridge. But also had an emerging issue at Walterville. So a number of sort of of challenges, yet great work taking place. 98% deployed for our advanced metering. Probably more than that at this point inside the city limits and completed. A really key substation. One of multiple substations that will be working on. And I know all commissioners were there for the opening of the current substation. So wanted to commend staff for that. On the water side, water quality remains good, reliability is good. Some really significant project work taking place. We we know that we have substantially completed the East 40th project. Many of you were involved from the very beginning on that one before we even broke ground. Some of you more recently involved with the College Hill Water Storage Project. Both of those have really significant impacts in the long term because of the resiliency that they add. But in the near term, the just the impacts on those those neighborhoods is significant. And we always want to appreciate that. I think this is an area where the project team and the communications team and the amount and the quality of the outreach has been significant. We have a number of transmission work projects going on on the water side as well. And we're continuing to progress on the permitting pieces for. The Willamette Second Water Treatment Plan. One of the more significant. Projects that was completed. At least launched, I'll say in 2024. Was the modernization of our some of our major systems, our customer systems. And also our finance systems, our customer portal. There were there were a number of things that were tied in with that. This was an incredibly incredible amount of effort and probably. I I say here where business continuity meets meets strategic opportunity. This was a necessary project. Given that we were replacing systems that were initially put in in the 1990s. And so there was a necessity to it. But it also facilitates some new products and services, new customer analysis and other things that we think will be useful strategically going forward. And I just have to compliment the leadership of that. So Deborah and Julie and Travis, but also recognize that this was an area where. Probably for the first time as an organization, we fully implemented change management, continuous improvement. We documented, we had to document over 100 different unique processes associated with changing out the system. And so the the teams that were involved here, approximately 75 of our employees. Were involved directly in this project. But then we also had their backfills. So they were used to develop the new system and we had to backfill their positions with other people in the organization. And so this this was an amazing amount of work. And and part of which made it so strategic was we've never done anything successfully like this before. And so when you're doing something new and try to set a new standard on how you do projects like this. We wanted to do this one well. We are now, as you know, in our some of stabilization, hyper care, we're working through. We've launched it, it went live in December. Now there's lots of of details to to work on to make this. Usable going forward. And so I just wanted to commend a number of different people and the board for being willing to make those investments. In this really critical system. As many of you know, we're we're very involved. We have a lot of touch points with the community. Most of these were were part of the the packet that that you received. Continue to do a lot of work in energy efficiency and conservation. The the work this year was was significant as far as the number of projects. I think it's an all time high, almost 2000 energy efficiency projects were completed. There's a kind of a breakdown, significant amount in the residential sector, also in the residential limited income sector as far as number of projects. Those projects, though compared with the amount of energy efficiency you get out. The the highest degree of actual savings per dollar invested was in in the commercial area. And so just some of the the data there, lots of work continued on on water conservation as well. Leak detection, bill assistance. And so helped almost a little under 6,000 customers, 5,700 customers through bill assistance programs. And so significant amount of of work. And and also, you know, through our, some of our programs related to our use of clean fuels credits, such as our electrification of transportation. Those actually come from from funds that come through those those credits that we receive from the state. So a lot of work there. And then kind of what was touched on earlier. The the amount of touch points that the amount of communications significant. And I have to mention this because I put the picture up there. Phenomenal event, phenomenal approach to take with a reservoir that's going away. And that this was a a really great opportunity for us to connect with the community. And celebrate the fact that since 1938, this reservoir has served our community in a number of different ways, including stargazing and skateboarding and bike riding. But also recognize that, well, while that's a certain role it fulfilled. Our primary role is to make sure that our community has safe drinking water going forward. And so I thought that was a significant event as well as just the number of of opportunities that we have to talk to customers. We respond to customers, the customer survey, I think, was reflective of that. I'll end with just a couple of quick summaries. We do go through the the goals and provide quarterly updates to commissioners. Overall, when I looked at all the goals and subgoals, you know, there there's usually kind of an overarching goal. And then there's a few specific details within those. Looks like a little over my first estimate, a little over 90% of those subgoals were achieved in 2024. Some had progress with some mixed debate whether they were fully completed. Quite a few of them were either fully completed or substantially completed. Goal one and goal two tend to be more operations in their orientation. And so you see these things like compliance, operational efficiencies, major projects, things like that. And then. The rest of the goals from this last year tended to be more strategic, looking at everything from workforce to the new system I mentioned, rate design. Integrated resource planning and the actions associated with that, including Bonneville. And how we're engaged in in the provider of choice decision. And then how we approached alternative funding, which wasn't just about getting grants, which we have. Been awarded over 20 million of those, but also developing a process by which we can make sure that this type of funding aligns with our strategic direction. And we're not just chasing money to chase money, but there's a particular purpose that can provide. Rate benefits for our customers as well as helping us fulfill our mission. And so. With that, commissioners. I know there's 82 pages. I have no idea what you're going to pull out from those 82 pages to ask about. So I think what I'll do is just turn it back to you. If we can answer them on the spot, we will. If you or if you just want to make comments, that's great too. So really appreciate it. Want to thank you for all your help, a lot of decisions made this last year, a lot of guidance you provided. And to thank staff and our community partners and our suppliers. There's, there's a lot of different people that we call our community. So. We appreciate that and President Barofsky, I'll just turn it back to you.
Great, thank you for the presentation. I will look to board members for questions or comments. Tonya.
You draw the shirt.
I guess so. Well, I. I don't have very much to add, but I did want to say that I just very much appreciate the structure by which. The goals and the achievements are made quarterly and annually. It just makes it so much easier as a board member to be able to get that view inside of each of the. I mean, we we vote on so many different projects and they're multi-year projects. And so staying up to date on them, I know it's an immense amount of work. And sometimes when. We don't say very much or have, you know, it, I just don't want staff to feel like that is it's time wasted because it is certainly not. Part of the reason that I think we don't have many questions, aside from pre meeting questions. Is that it's just so detailed that we I feel like we have a very clear picture of what is happening in the organization. So very much appreciate the 82 pages that went into and all of the work that went into creating those 82 pages.
Right, Mindy.
I just have a very small question and it's on the slide. Community. Go back. Yeah, so I just have a question where it says the 2024 energy efficiency and we have like almost 7,800 megawatts and the target was 11. Almost 1200, 12,000. Does that mean that, can you say, did we not meet our goal that we wanted to in energy efficiency projects? Or what does that say?
So I I would say yes and no. So there's, there's two ways to look at energy efficiency. One is megawatt hours, which tends to be the energy component, which, as you can see, because of the makeup of the projects. And how the budgets were allocated, we did not make our enter our megawatt hour objective. On the other hand, peak is also part of that measurement and we were 131% of our goal on the peak side. Some of that was just the makeup of the projects that got completed in 2024. So technically you could say we were under on the energy side, we were over on the peak side. And so kind of mixed mixed in that sense, although I I would point out pretty intentional. That we looked at how the projects kind of were evolving. We did get several million dollars extra from Bonneville from projects that we had turned in. And so. This kind of some, it was really more of a makeup of the projects and and how they they worked out. And so we will hear more going forward on the role of energy efficiency in our energy planning. That's that's coming up. We do have the assessment of the demand side potential that we're seeing. So this is not the end of it. But that's a good observation. It has a lot to do with the makeup of the projects that we completed.
Great, that's it, thank you.
Tim.
Thank you, Chair. Want to echo. Commissioner Carlson's sentiment. I think I don't have significant questions because everything has been laid out so clearly. And I think as a as a new commissioner, I hope that that carries a lot of water, that this is very well thought through. This is. Very extensive and 82 pages is a lot, but good, it's a good allot. Uh, one slide backwards, I have just a clarifying question and this caught my attention a few times. You have the. The list for the enterprise solutions on 1210, 101% of bills were sent out. Can you clarify that for me?
Deborah, do you want to help with that? Or Julie?
It would be that we were under in previous, like we were under 99% and so.
Didn't we? We we held some.
I'm happy to take my question off the air.
And and I think that's relative to the bills that were scheduled that day. So there's a certain cycle that we go through for billing, and we could be a little under on one day and a little over on the next depending. So it's it's more relative to a schedule than it is. I don't know how you would be overbilling if you sent out 101% of the bills. So it it has to do with the scheduling as opposed to the to the actual number.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, that was my only, that's the only thing that really caught my attention. Otherwise, great work. Thank you. Check.
Yes, I'd like to thank you for putting this, the funding source on the community investment, where you see with like the money is coming from the state or whatever, on the EV grants and things like that. A real quick question. It shows that we had an expense to run run to stay warm. Is that our expense and that's netted out with the gross revenue? Or is that really costing us as we go backwards?
I'm sorry, which what are your
Run to stay warm, it's like 6,000 bucks, but it's just, it shows it as an expense. And I thought we made money on it.
I'll check into that. I know that we do receive a check on that. So I don't know if that's offsetting that or not, but I can look into that. Now that that we can clarify that for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for the report. It is quite extensive and thorough. You know, when I go through and look at it, I always look for the ones that are underperforming. Because that's, to me, those are the ones that are the that I need to look at a little bit more closely. And for the most part, there's always a good explanation as to why they're they're underperforming, whether it's a regulatory hoop that we have to jump through and we're, we thought we would hit a benchmark and we can't because of because of we're waiting for somebody to check a box in in a place that we have no control over. And so that clarification is very helpful on the underperformances. And the number of underperformance is it's it's a little bit lower, I think. Well, I don't know. There were, there were, there were a few areas where under, you know, I saw a lot of the the negative ones. But again, they all had reasonable explanations to them. And hopefully that those those will get cleared up in in the next quarter. And we'll, we'll see the dial moving in the right direction. But other than that, thank you for the comprehensive report.
Yeah, I appreciate that, President Borowski. I think there's, there's a couple of ways that we try to look at at the metrics, and the metrics can kind of continue to evolve as we go. Some of it is the absoluteness of the metric, and the other is the trend. And for example, we saw a bit trending to the unfavorable side of some of our safety metrics, for example, in 2024. Now, that's off of a basis that has probably been the best in our history. And there were some reasonable explanations for that. Some of those are normalized. Some of it resulted because of the largest storm response in our history. And so there's, there's some things that we we are looking for relative to trends that we think may be larger than a particular snapshot in time. We were talking about the survey and a snapshot in time. So we, we are looking at that. And to the point earlier, you know, do you invest in things that are already, is there a diminishing return at some point where your investment doesn't doesn't go? There, there are some areas that that honestly, I think we're, we're keeping a pretty close eye on. One is, we want to make sure we're doing the right things on the leading side of safety as opposed to the lagging side of safety, which some of your measurements are. We also really trying to pay attention to things like water years and and how we mitigate for changes in water availability, for for market conditions. There's a number of things there that that we're looking at. Compliance is is high on our list as well, along with a number of other things. The the leadership team and I are really trying to dive into what some of our priorities are right now and how we create the the appropriate milestones and metrics to to capture that. I think there's, one of the things that we're a bit concerned with is, are we becoming too fragmented? You know, you have to stay focused on what your, what your core business is. And so those are some of the things that we're looking at to make sure as an organization, we're, we're keeping our eye on the ball. When you have 82 pages, which page in the 82 is the most important? And I think that's where we want to make sure that we're paying attention to things. And and so it's, it's great that we have the availability and the staff and and who's who's diligent with that. But there's, there's a lot to take a look at there.
And and just to going back to what you just said, I don't, I hope that if in that lens of you looking at, are we measuring this the correct way? That we're not changing the way we're looking at measuring it just to get better outcomes. You know, that that we're actually, if we're making a change in the way we're measuring some of the the outcomes that we're doing, we have a grounded reason why we're doing that. And if we are changing that, have a footnote in the in the in the quarter of the reports that says this went from below average to above average because we changed the way we're looking at it. And the reason we did that is blank. That would be something that I would like it. Because if you're just going to say, well, let's change the way we metricize this just so we get better numbers, that's not what we're looking for.
Yeah, I totally agree. It's not what we're looking for. I think what we're looking for is, is what is the most informative. And in some cases, that makes the number worse. In some cases, it makes it better. But I think it's based on creating the appropriate measurements that can drive decisions and actions. I think that's what we're really looking at. And so we, we don't make decisions on whether it makes it better or worse. Is it, is it giving us the guidance that we need? I think that's the real important thing for us. It sounds like for you as well.
Yeah.
Just building off of what Commissioner Brown asked about, I was just curious. Because I know that we have E-Web staff that participate in that, would that be a count in that cost column? So as you review, I'm curious if, if, and if so, are all of the other ones? Because I know there's a E-Web Ambassador Efforts and Events section in there that's separate. But it doesn't seem to have all of those individually called out. So I just wonder if maybe it's staff time that's paid that helps to the water trailer and such.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that. And in part of the reason that we, in the case of the Run to Stay Warm, moved that to an outside organization was with staff time and opportunity cost. We were, you know, spending significantly more than we were bringing in for the benefit of our customers. And so that didn't seem to accomplish the objective. So we'll dive into that a little bit deeper.
Mr. Brown. Quick question. So I know there's been chatter about, is there a problem with billing upriver? Because I know that he's seen a lot of online chat about conspiracies. And and I just got, just happened to get text from a person I know up there, and their bill doubled. And it went from like 1,120 in November to 4,194, and then back down to 1,200, now back up to 4,100. But his bills have been consistent all up until these last couple of months, and now they're going off the charts.
There's, there's nothing wrong with the actual billing. There could be a couple of things going on relative to to potential for estimated reads in that process. We did go through some, some weather conditions. There's also, and as commissioners know, and I've, I've mentioned significant changes from last year to this year relative to some of the breakdown of the bill. And then also, when your average temperature goes from 39 to 36, it's in that window where efficiency starts to come into play if you have electric heat, for example. So there's a number of things there, but there's nothing wrong with the, the way that the billing is operating. Upriver might have had more estimated reads, for example, or something like that, but.
Respond that way because I mean, it's a coincidence that he got some, he's got some information and I just actually received, and they're all upriver.
Yeah. And and you know, it is, we do, if customers have specific comments or questions about their bill, there's a number of ways that they can get ahold of us. We can also do a reread potentially of a particular meter. Those upriver are not automated meters, so they would have to be manually read. So but we'd be happy to look into it specifically.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this?
Thanks again for your support, commissioners. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next story, moving on to the watershed annual report. Mike and Susan.
Good evening, commissioners, President Borowski, GM Lawson, others. Mike Masters here, the Water Operations Manager with Susan Fricki, our Water Resource and Quality Assurance Supervisor. We're here pleased to bring you some highlights of the 2024 State of the McKenzie Watershed Report. First, I wanted to remind everyone of our Source to Tap multi-barrier approach to protecting our drinking water. And, you know, the first layer of that is our source water protection. So can't thank you enough for the continued support and investment in protecting that source. There's efficiencies with treatment that can be realized there financially and other ways. Also, positive effects on our environment. Also want to thank Susan and her staff for diligently working to protect our source day in, day out, and our multi-agency partners that participate in that. So thank you. Starting off, just remind everybody of our drinking water source protection goals before I turn it over to Susan. We want to work with partners to maintain source water quality, prioritize the benefits to the water treatment and electric generation in the McKenzie watershed, and promote public awareness and stewardship. Susan.
Susan Fricki, for the record. And here we are. We're going to go into some of the data. We have some highlights to share for you tonight. Let's see, for harmful alcohol blooms, I guess the best data is not much data. So we didn't really have that much happen that was a big deal for 2024, which is a wonderful thing. It's less work for treatment. It's less things that we need to be worrying about and tracking. That's good. We did have a fire at Blue River Reservoir that blocked access for a little bit, but we continued to monitor downstream. And then last year, we had had that pretty big sample in August of bacteria in some of the urban storm drains. So the stormwater sites, we've been continuing to monitor that. This year, we've been going out a little bit more regularly, looking at those sites, and we found some pretty high levels. So, you know, anything above, Frank asked me to talk about when we have concerns, you know, anything above the thousands, anything above 1,000. I'm not going to go into regulations right now, but you wouldn't want like your animals or your kids playing in those kind of things that are high like that. Definitely. And while they are a minor contribution into the McKenzie River as a whole, it definitely is a concern, and it's something we want to look at, partially because we want to work with our partners and as part of our urban waters program, that if we do have these high levels and we can find the source, we can work on mitigating it with our partners. This has happened before when we found large amounts of canine, like fecal material that was in there. And so we worked with City of Springfield. They went out and had people that were going to be able to put more of the pet waste bags out. And so then you did community outreach for that. This year, we started doing some of the DNA source tracking, and we just have preliminary info. We'll share more with you next year or later in the year. But it actually looks like the dominant this time is human. And then there's also contributions by bird and dogs as well. But dogs are the dominant one that we found yet. But we want to keep looking into it. So we're not done with this one yet. So this is more just preliminary, and we'll come back with more information. We're also going to try to get a little bit of the information about how much of this is that, you know, is it like this much of the water that's contributing? And once that gets into the McKenzie, it might not really, it dilutes out a lot, so it's not such an issue. Some of the highlights around source protection, we installed a permanent continuous monitoring network at Quartz Creek. And so that does not only flow, so does our discharge, but it also does water quality. And why that's really important is that we have that big restoration project that's going to be happening there. So we're getting some pre-data right now. It was a great collaboration with USGS on that. We also updated the emergency response system. And then one of the best things I think that we did this year, that I'm really proud of our source water protection folks, is we had, of course, the annual spill drill. This year, it was up at Finn Rock that went really well. But we've been working across the region to really help support other programs as well. So David Donnie, one of our staff, went up and presented at the EPA Region 10 Spill Response Workshop, which was great because he's our local expert. And then they also went down, some of our staff went down to Medford and helped them actually set up a response, trying to figure out how they would react to a spill around their intake. And then they also participated in a training as well. So I wanted to highlight that great work because I love that we're able to share our work with other utilities and help make their responses better. For the Pure Water Partners, we've been doing a lot of amazing work with the rate fee that you heard about earlier and that Mr. Moll was talking about and that Mr. Borowski, Commissioner Borowski was talking about. And so some of that work has been with the Pure Water Partnership. As of this year, we planted, well, planted almost a million trees and shrubs, which is great. We've been working with over 230 landowners, which is also amazing. Got a lot of natural regeneration happening. And what we're doing is we're kind of wrapping up a lot of that Holiday Farm Fire response around the, for the Pure Water Partners this year. And so we've done a lot of great work out there. We're going to wrap it up this summer. And we also did a lot of strategic planning with the Pure Water Partners to try to figure out what next. And we're going to kind of going to go back to the original intent of doing the riparian protections and enhancement, which will be wonderful. This is the one that keeps changing every day. We're talking about impacts of federal funding. Right now, we have planned a 1.75 mile restoration project at Quartz Creek. I think most of you have been out there and seen the project and where this is going to happen. The last part of the implementation funding is about $4.5 million. That's funded through a NOAA transformational grant. As of right now, the funding is still available, still able for us to be used by McKenzie Gouther Shit Council. It's actually the one that holds that. We're hoping that we can implement that project this summer. There might be a pause delay. As we all know, there's federal funding uncertainty. Also, some of the project managers for this one have been, that worked for the Forest Service, has been terminated. The layoffs that are happening. So there is a lot of uncertainty. We will keep you posted. We are very hopeful. This is one of the biggest issues for water quality in the basin. It's what turns our river chocolatey milk in the wintertime a lot. And we really want to get this project done. We've spent a lot of our resources and time and our, our staff synergy, and we've supported a lot of our partners. So we're, we'll keep you posted. Let's all pull for this one to happen. I think it's a great project. We have some of our other staff, Nancy, who's here tonight as well, has been working with Misty on the Septic System Assistance. I have the Septic Grant, sorry. I'm just so excited about this. We've had over 120 grants to homeowners for septic repair and replacement. I mean, what a great use of government funds. We had funding for both DEQ and from BIS Oregon, Lane County. And we still have about $300,000 from the BIS Oregon, Lane County money. The DEQ, we had to stop spending the end of 2024. The Lane County money, we still have a little over a year, I think, still a little bit over a year to keep spending that money. And so we'll keep working with landowners on that. It's just a wonderful success story of these partnerships that we've developed and our staff's great work. It's so awesome. And as far as money, we've also been able to get more grant funds back this year. So while we did put out a considerable amount of money, we put out about 2.3, we were able to get quite a bit of grant funding back. So we really only spent about $800,000 of the rate fee this year, which is lovely. It's great. We've done a really good job of making our operations more efficient and also getting grant reimbursements, everything we were hoping to do. And then there's more numbers and things. And if you want to talk about numbers, we can look at those. And I just want to make sure we had plenty of time for questions and answers. This is a beautiful picture that David Dottie Hughes kiddo took up at Cougar River Reservoir for Northern Lights. What we wanted to talk about is kind of what's coming next. And what's coming next is we're hoping to be working on source water protection efforts for the second source. We're not going to do it quite We're not going to do it quite as the scattered way we do probably like with the Pure Water Partners down. We want to work with anybody who wants to work with us. We already have amazing partners that are working in the Middle Fork and the Coast Fork rivers. And so we're going to let them work on doing strategic prioritization with us and then working with those landowners, working with those folks who we need to, to really do those high-quality water quality improvements that we can do. So we're strategically using our resources when we get to that point. And I know Commissioner Brown has questions. I can see it in his face, so.
I think we all do. Thank you for the presentation. I will put it around questions. We'll start on this side. Tim?
I'm glad I got it before Commissioner Brown. I am forgive, it's a great report. Thank you so much for, for the work. And it's clear to me, a lot of the, the intention and protections that have been put in. If this is an inappropriate question for you, please let me know, and maybe I'll direct towards Frank. For the, thank you for mentioning the middle and coast fork rivers. I'm wondering if we're also going to be receiving as a board a middle and coast fork watershed report like we're receiving right now for the McKenzie River.
We need to start back a few steps for that one. So we'll be doing a source water assessment report. Our staff are already getting working with DEQ and other folks on that. We're kind of just waiting for it to be the right time to start working on that. And then we'll figure out what kind of report you all want to see and what we'll be presenting. We've also already started doing some like preliminary monitoring in for both source water protection and compliance at where the intake will be for the treatment plan. So we're starting to do those things. We can start incorporating them in, but they're still a little preliminary. We finally just heard about the first permit that's going out. So we've kind of been waiting for that green flag to go and do more of this for you all.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Indeed.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Okay, the first one goes back to the fecal bacteria. And you're thinking that it's primarily or human?
So we're doing this thing when they look at the genetic marker to see what kind of thing it is. Is it, you know, human dog, bird, whatnot? And the predominant one right now seems to be human. And we've got some more work we want to do on that. This is a new lab that we're using for the first time. And so we kind of want to see a little bit more data. We didn't have tons of data points. We want to have a little bit more data for you all before we say, yes, that's what's going on. Okay?
Yeah.
Because then we would work with City of Springfield on trying to figure out where that's coming from, how we would clean it up, you know, like, is there a sewer leak or something? Let's find it.
That was my question is how would it, was it leaky, septic systems, are people going to the bathroom in the river?
Well, I mean, it could be somebody like, you know, pumping out an RV. The interesting thing is all the different colors. So if you look at the different colors, like, let's look at September, which is so September is right there. But each one of these bars is a different channel. So we're like, if we saw it in the same channel every time, it was really high only in that channel, to me, they'll be like, there's a leak there. But we're seeing it across different ones. So we still need to do a little bit more investigation and try to see, is it just because we didn't use to go out and sample when we were getting some more of these first flush events, when these canals were sitting, channels were sitting all summer long, and then the water comes in and flushes them out? Is it, is something else going on? And that's why we want to do a little bit more work on this.
I also have a question on the, the watershed recovery work that we've done. And I believe that the fee is set to expire, like, in the, in the fall, is that right? Or the end of this year?
July of '26.
Okay, so we have another year. And I'm curious, how many, like, apart from the Quartz Creek, are there other major unfinished work that needs to be done? I know it's been a great success, but like, overall, how would you summarize the work that's been done, the work that still needs to be done?
Answer. And Steve, I'm going to do this right. No, I think we've done amazing work with this. I think we've helped leverage this money. I forgot, I didn't get the number, and I'm sorry. I did just say budget stuff, and I'm sure my budget person will be like, Susan, why did you do that? Because I wanted to have this conversation, you know, but we've done amazing work with partners. I think we've leveraged something like $20 million in grants with the money that we provided. It's just wonderful. It's been a wonderful way to support community work, to support our nonprofits. And we also do have some really great, amazing work to continue doing. Like, for example, we use the rate fee to do a lot of the planning and design for Quartz Creek that we were talking about, which is, you know, going to be a wonderful project that will help water quality, fisheries, infrastructure protection, all those good things. We don't have funding yet for, we have funding, FEMA funding for the planning and design for Innis Creek, which is another acquisition McKenzie River trusted. We have another acquisition we're looking into that we'll talk about in April, hopefully. And we have FEMA planning and design for that, but we don't have implementation funding yet. We also have a lot of federal uncertainty right now. We had a bunch of NOAA people get, like, I think 800 people nationwide got laid off Friday. We have a lot of uncertainty with federal or service staff retention that's going to be coming up. We might lose our whole, like, project team that's going to be working on these. And so we're going to need to find ways to bring those experts in to help train our people so we can get built up. I mean, this is happening about six months to a year ahead of where we wanted it to happen because we're hoping to train a lot of these folks. So we have experts at every agency and nonprofit that work on these projects, and we don't have that yet. So we definitely could find really productive ways to use this funding, should it continue.
Great. Thank you.
Just going to yield my time to.
Your questions?
No, I'm good. Are you sure? Yeah?
No, go ahead. All right. Well, thank you very much. And you know where my, why I'm sitting here, the primary reason why I've sat here for 18 years. And I've gone through it. I've got the old one, and I've done some comparisons and some general things because I do want to have a one-on-one with you and anybody else because I got more questions than we have time for. But general macro. So the Upper Willamette Soil and Water, they're on our tax bill now. They get millions of dollars a year. And are they going to be taking the lead on the financing of this? Because, you know, we're not the only ones using the water at Willamette. SUB does. And I'm not so sure they, you know, and the same thing with McKenzie. So are we going to try and expand the, the participation from other agencies that have sources of funding like we do? Because we're going to get pressed up on rates, and it's really important to protect this. And Willamette is going to be 10 times more difficult than, than McKenzie, based on what I know. And so.
Respond to that one first before you move on to the next. Is that okay? Otherwise, I'll forget because it's past nine. We're sleeping.
I don't forget.
So for Soil and Water Conservation District, we actually just had a meeting with them. They have taken over the Filbert monitoring, which was a smaller project. It was about $10,000, $12,000 a year where we went out with hazelnut growers and, you know, monitored for the moss. So they would have better timing for spraying, use less spray. They've taken over that project. And then we've kind of ended up rerouting some funding around we're closing out some of the Pure Water Partner work that E-Web's funding. And the Soil and Water Conservation District right now is looking at their budget because their budget starts July 1st for their next fiscal year. And they're looking at picking up a considerable amount of the staffing time for being able to do some of the planning for the Pure Water Partners. And so that's something that will definitely benefit for us so that we can reroute to some of this federal uncertainty with the rate fee that we have right now. But they, we're hoping that they pick up some of the paycheck for that one, yes.
So all the problems are down in 69, 57, 42nd, 52nd. That's where our problems are. That's where our problems were last year. That's where our problems have been for a long time. Carl was sitting up there. We had the same thing with the dogs and the kennels and people washing them out and things like that. Nothing's happened. We're still getting these high reports of that. And the same thing with the December event when we had the City of Springfield's sewage overflow and going to the McKenzie. And, you know, nobody, you know, and it was an overflow. So it's going to happen again. And where's the follow-up on saying, okay, you got to fix the system? Because if that's, that wasn't an equipment failure or anything else, that was just overloading the system. And so that could happen every month. You know, I mean, where are we going to go out and push back and say, this is unacceptable? You know, of all the actions and things there. And I'm sorry, I don't want you to fight my fight. But what do you need from us? Because, like I say, on the Penta report, that the DEQ, that every year, I said this last year, and the minutes don't reflect it. But, okay, in two weeks, we're going to get the report. We're not going to see those results on the pentacorphenol bloom until next year. So we're a year behind by two weeks because we have this report last week of February, first week of March, every year. And the, the DEQ doesn't require them to report until the third week of March. So we got old data again, and it looks like it's migrating. So things like that, that I would like to say, what do you need from us? To, I'm not saying you're not doing it right. I want to do it better because to me, it doesn't make sense to put a chemical in water to clean it. Let's just not let it get dirty in the first place. And I want to be more proactive. I want a bit more funding. So what can we do to help you?
What can we do? Well, we do have our urban waters partnership, which is a collaboration of folks like, we have nonprofits that are there. We also have City of Springfield, Eugene, Lane County, SUB, and E-Web are all there along with other partners. So that is a really good way that started bringing people together. But I think to me, it looks like we, and David, you can weigh in if you'd like, but I also don't want to call you out. I think we need to do some more investigative monitoring. And right now, E-Web is the only one who has the ability to really do that. And I want to make sure that we, like, how much we need to do, what we need to dig into. Because David and I were actually just emailing about this while I was waiting to talk earlier. And we need to try and figure out where this is. Like, I was telling Commissioner Schlossberg, like, if it was in one stormwater outflow, it would be one thing, but it's in a lot of them. So we're not quite sure what's happening. We want to do more monitoring. And then we want to have the ability to work with City of Springfield. And that's where I think you all could use when you're meeting with City of Springfield, SUB, all those folks is, what do we want to do to fix these things?
So is there going to be a plan in place to do it? Because I, I think this was a very similar problem in last year's report. And all the way back to Carl's days, we've had these fights with these outflows. And, and we know where it's coming from, and it's coming in right above our intake. And is there a plan to sit down and have a meeting with people and say, this, we need to deal with this?
Hoping, we had a plan at one point from what I've been told by staff for 52nd to do a restoration project there that got shut down. And I am hoping with the work that's happening at IP, where there might be a decommissioning of the cooling ponds, and we're going to work on a restoration project there. I would like to get that going again. I feel like we have a lot of pressure to do projects lots of different places. I feel that's a really important one. And I want to start picking up the energy now that we're kind of closing up on some of the holiday farm fire restoration. We've had a lot of our staff and a lot of our resources working on that. It is very important for us. It's very important for our community. Important for you all. And I'd like to turn more, like, I think that's why we did our board float trip last year was more urban. I think we need to turn more urban and have a plan for those kind of areas and start that project work. But we're also being spread then with, you know, we've got these projects here and those projects here, and we've got people getting laid off, and we're trying to reroute. So I don't know what the best answer is. I know it's a priority for me, and I would like to help come up with a plan for that.
Okay. And, and thank you for acknowledging me all. And then I got my last question is, it is just an observation is that if we're not going to go out and do this, that, you know, you, one of the reports, we just put in a very expensive monitoring in the Kaiser Slough. And for those who don't know, that's where IP dumps their boiler water in right above the Hayden Ridge. And do we do anything on temperature there? Because I know some river guides that are going in there and putting a thermometer in and saying, water's in the 60s.
I'd be glad to get you data on that. Absolutely. If we can get the data on that, we definitely have that, and we can pull that for you.
Because I'm just wondering that, you know, if they're dumping warm water into the river, that's not.
That's one of the reasons we put that in, so we can keep an eye on it. Yeah, we'll make sure and get that when you come out and talk about this.
And I, well, go to the time, but I do want to see if you can schedule a meeting with me and whoever you want to have me engage with and just have a conversation so I can get more educated, so I can help ring a message to get you the resources you need to address some of these concerns, because I think they are concerns.
Yeah, I would love that. And this is a very cursory book. I have amazing staff that take thousands of data points and compress it into like 30 pages and like five pages of, 10 pages of data. And it's very hard to tell the story in that limited time. So I would opportunity to come talk with you.
Yeah, I want to be your best ally, and I will be. And you just throw, throw the bone and I'll chase. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I put myself in the queue. Couple of questions and a comment. On the algae blooms that were lower this year, do we think that that has any correlation with the, the level that cougars at and that, that a lot more cooler water is coming in rather than it's sitting up high there and being warm? I mean, I've, I've boated a lot of these lakes, and you, you get the pesto in August, right? The picture they have there, I just call it pesto because that's what it looks like to me. I don't know where I get that reference from, but it's not as tasty as some of the pesto I've had. But I know that it was a little bit cooler of a summer. And then, yeah, is cougar's drawdown, do you think, has an influence on those algae blooms?
You know, I'll talk right now generally about harmful algal blooms. And when you take free-flowing rivers and turn them into warm bathtubs with longer residence time where the water's sitting there for longer, it has a longer time to get warmer. You potentially have more nutrients that can pool up and settle and like into those to feed the blooms. You do get bigger blooms than you generally find within free-flowing rivers. So if you're reducing that time, that's definitely something that could be happening. And also, there's just not the surface area, the large body of water at that point either.
Right. I'm just thinking, you said, year to year, it was, it was, it was a down year. And is that, I noticed that correlated with kind of cougar being drawn down because of the, the fish mitigation. I was just wondering.
Anything you'd like to add, sir, back there?
I don't have a speaker, but David Donahue, environmental specialist in source protection, I would concur with that. I think the core managing cougar a lot lower, means the retention time's a lot lower. But I also think when you don't set up the thermal climb early in the season, that also contributes to bloom formation. So yeah, the water's probably a little cooler. And you're just not setting up that really stratified system in the reservoir, which kind of helps promote bloom growth. So.
Perfect. And then I would also kind of piggyback on what Commissioner Brown said. As far as leaning into the Upper Willamette Soil and Water District, you know, they got their taxing district a couple of years ago. And I think that they're trying to figure out the highest and best use, uses for those funds. And I think that not necessarily going to them and saying, please fund this, but, but going to them as more of a partner than we were in, in the past, because their funds were so limited in the past that the projects that they could lean into were rather small. And now they've got a larger capacity. So I think leaning into them as willing partners, I think, would work both ways. I think they'll, they'll see the positive impacts that we've had in, in other areas of the watershed and, and want to work with us to partner. I know that, you know, on the council, on the, on the McKenzie Waterset Council, our funding has been really instrumental in, like you said, leveraging, leveraging grants and, and money going forward because it is there and it is there early. And so we can, we can demonstrate that, yes, we've got, we've got some money to get the planning and, and the people to help write the grants. And it is, that's been leveraged very well. And I think we can take that learning and, and partner with the, the water district and try and use those types of leveraging as well. It is a, it is a great organization that has been working long and hard on a very shoestring budget. And now their shoestring goes all the way up to their knee. And so it's going to be good to help them to work on our, on our watershed. So I look forward to that collaboration going forward.
I think it would be useful, other than just at a staff level, us saying, hey, my board says you need to step up. I, I mean, I feel it would be beneficial if there was some kind of direct board-to-board input. I'm not sure how that works with the SWCD. I know they're trying to work on how they want to do their granting programs, how they want to prioritize funding. And it might mean more coming from you all than just from like me and Nancy all the time of, can you guys pay for stuff too? If that, there's an option for that ever.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Yep.
I failed to mention it when I last spoke. I just want to celebrate your work with over almost a million shrubs and native trees planted since 2021 and the septic tank. That's, that's what I am called to. And what I observe is the direct community. That's, that's what I am called to and what I observe is the direct community engagement. And I just want to celebrate your intentionality and your work with that. So I, I just want to reshare congratulations to that.
I would love to turn that appreciation around to Nancy Tofa sitting in her back room and she is the energy and the amazingness behind that work. She's been leading that for us. So thank you so much, Nancy. I appreciate what she does and her and David every day because we just have an amazing team.
Any other comments? John, you got to have one more.
Here we ask for. No, I want to echo what Tim said and others. I mean, there's not, you know, I'm not, Mike barking isn't because I don't think you're doing a good job. I know I want you to do a great job. And if I, you know, if you want ten, yeah, you ask for twenty. And so read between the lines. I'm totally in support of what you're doing, but I also want to bring some other people to the table. That are getting a free ride and, and make sure that we address this the way we should. Because we're the keepers of it. Looked a great job we've done with McKenzie. And it's going to be a big task to do, to continue to do what we want to do, to just maintain it. And that's why, you know, I want to push a little bit on some of that. I'm saying you're not doing a good job. I'm just saying, I just want to maintain that we don't let it have more of these instances of. Systems getting overwhelmed and dumping that raw sewage into the river. It's just, to me, that's unacceptable. So let's, so that's all I got to say.
I agree and appreciate your support. And one of the reasons I'm excited about the second source is we have so many great partners that are doing amazing work. We don't have to always be the leader there. We can support our amazing partners. And we have a team that's worked really hard on building those collaborations. So we're ready to like plug and play over on that part instead of starting from scratch. And that's really exciting to me. And that will give us more energy to work on some of the urban things that have been a priority for you over and over again.
Yep, thank you.
Well, I'm going to, one last thing that I want to say is that. A lot of our, you know, we, a lot of times we have. Issues with some of the regulatory bodies, you know, because we're like, oh, my gosh, what are you doing? And how could, you know, things may not seem to make common sense. But in our watershed. I mean, a huge part of our watershed is federal lands. And the people that are being affected by some of the things that are happening in, in Washington these days. You know, you alluded to some of the, the really knowledgeable people that were, that are. Getting taken out of the conversation. I'm not sure how this board wants to weigh in on that. But to me, it's, it's. Almost devastating to see some of the people that are going to be going away as institutional knowledge that we have in our watershed. That's not going to be there to lead into. And so I don't know, as a board, if there's anything we can do to. You know, have a resolution that we support, you know, the, the Forest Department or NOAA or some of our partners in, in the vital work that we're doing. And, and I don't know, I just, I wanted to put that out there.
I'm so grateful. And I think our partners and our team is so grateful that we have this rate fee right now. We've been able to kind of reroute it a little bit, pull away a little bit from the PWP a little early, hand that off to the SWCD hopefully in the summer. Because we have some funds, I can say, yes, let's do this training. We have some funds, we can do that. The funds from EWEB and the fact that you have staff and resources supporting folks like Nancy and David and us. Is huge because we know we have stable like staffing resources and we have some supplemental funding. I mean, I don't think you understand how big of a deal that is. Also just for. Us being able to support our partners and colleagues because we know we have a job tomorrow. So we can provide that support to them just emotionally, you know. All those kinds of things. So. I don't know. I've been thinking a lot about it too.
All right. Frank, anybody else want to weigh in? Okay, great. Well, that's good. We're moving right ahead of schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you. Future board agendas.
Yes, commissioners, really only one. I, I would like to put forth to the commissioners that they decide not to do my annual performance review in March. That's not. Just kidding. Didn't think that would fly, but only two changes since. Last month in particular, and that, and that we added a city fee discussion for April and for May. For this board to discuss that issue. So I think really that's the most substantial change in the last month.
Anybody else? Yes, I do.
Well, I think that we're going to have to have some. Reports on a somewhat regular basis about how tariffs impact our regular supply chains. And, I mean, I, as information comes up, but I'm just anticipating that there's going to be something that we're going to have to deal with. We also have, I don't know, this morning I read Canada is cutting, you know, threatening to cut power to the US. We have a lot of power that comes. Into the states and I think into our region from dams that are in Canada. I don't know how entirely that all works with BPA, but I, I think as that comes up, we're just going to have to stay abreast of it and. Certainly appreciate the idea of, if there is anything that we can do to advocate for the work that we need to support. If we need to have a broader discussion about what that looks like as a utility, if there's any further advocacy banned word. That we want to do, then I think we should do it.
Regarding the city fee, did you want? Questions posed to you that we could maybe have you and or staff answer before we have that? Because I probably going to have a bunch of questions. And if we do it in April, we won't get a response till May and you're probably looking for a decision. Sometime within those two meetings. Do you want questions first or not?
And yes, whatever questions you could send to my direction beforehand, that would be helpful. It's not absolutely necessary. We've been doing some research on the, the mechanics of the implementation, for example. But really, this is a, a board decision around the content of, of a utility bill. But we can certainly enter, you know, look into researching whatever questions commissioners would have. And the, and the sooner you want to get us those questions, the better.
I was just speaking to Sonia's potential suggestion about some kind of resolution or of advocacy. And I know this is not the topic of discussion, but hearing Susan talk about how many outstanding federal funds that we're still waiting on. I would be really hesitant to put forward a public statement, just given how punitive. The current administration is, and I would hate to do something that would jeopardize the funding that we're waiting for because that could be kind of disastrous. And I don't think that's putting forth a resolution would make it do anything. So that's just my feeling.
Just in response to that, I mean, if we find that those funds don't come back, I think we should jump on that. And I'm sure Jason is. In contact with our federal delegation too, but it doesn't feel like there's much that they can do.
That's right. Yeah, President Borowski, I, I just would, would highlight that. We interact with federal agencies on a number of levels. I do think that most of what we do, and I think this is real credit to our organization. Is done with very specific intent in mind when we set out to do it. So when we have projects or we have finances that may come from outside sources, we generally know the, the intent and the purpose for those. And, and what the risk may be. On one hand, I think we're in a good position. In that a large percentage of our funding does not come from a federal source. It is supplemental. It is specific. It enhances what we do. It has, again, specific purposes. But I would also say that this goes way beyond supply chains. And particular relationships with, with people in the McKenzie Valley. We have a number of relationships with, with Bonneville, for example, they're a federal agency as well. And so we're trying to make sure that we keep track of what the, sort of the real world on the ground impacts to our organization are. There are lots of, there's lots of churn, I guess I'll, I'll say it that way. I think as staff, if we do feel like there's a particular point and purpose for advocacy, that we would. Make that request of the board. You are public servants and so you have the ability to, to voice your individual views or even your collective views as a board. As individual public servants, we're not quite in the same position. So we're, we'll try and be very practical in our requests.
So that takes good board agenda, board wrap up. Indy. Tim. Okay, I will go, go with the flow. Frank, anything for you to wrap things up?
I did just want to answer one of the questions that came up on that run to stay warm. That was six thousand dollars net to our customer care program, not actually an expense.
Because others look like it's an expense. Thank you.
Okay. Well, with that, we will adjourn again ahead of schedule. Two for two.